The Clerk will now proceed to read the Orders of the Day.
Animal Welfare Livestock Exports Bill, Committee.
Now, before the House resolves itself into committee, I draw the House's attention to the instruction motion on the order paper in the name of Sir Jeffrey Donaldson to allow the committee to make provision for the whole of the United Kingdom. It is subject to selection by the Chair, and the Speaker has decided to select the motion. Is it you, Sammy Wilson? Right, I will call Sammy Wilson to move the instruction motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And first of all, can I thank the Speaker for selecting this instruction? And secondly, to the Clerk for the help and advice which has been given. The reason for bringing forward this instruction is that this bill, as is clear on the face of the bill, applies only to the export of animals from Great Britain. It does not include Northern Ireland. And of course, in doing so, an important piece of animal welfare legislation will not be applying to the whole of the United Kingdom, but in fact, a significant part of the United Kingdom, because a significant number of animal exports come from Northern Ireland, will be excluded. And this exclusion actually is a very important exclusion, because the most likely source of exports of animals which will suffer as a result of long journeys is Northern Ireland. Because as a result of the exclusion of Northern Ireland from this bill, animals can be taken from Northern Ireland, exported through the Irish Republic, taken on a 23-hour boat journey to European mainland, and then carried down to the south of Spain, France, or indeed further abroad. So the degree of suffering that animals are likely to experience as a result of the exclusion of Northern Ireland from this bill is very severe. And yet, the whole point of the bill was to reduce animal suffering, to ensure that live exports did not happen, which could include, which could lead to animal suffering. Let me just remind the House what this journey entails. Because in a letter from the Last Minister for Agriculture in Northern Ireland, I was informed that when animals were taken from Northern Ireland to a 300-odd-mile journey through the Irish Republic, and they get to Ross Lair, there was no necessity to feed them at that rest point. They'd be put on a ship for a 23-hour journey without being fed, and that still enabled the exporters to comply with EU safety regulations. I put it to the House that if this bill is about reducing suffering for animals when it comes to live exports, then this is a huge gap, and it's one which needs to be closed. Now, the Minister is likely to tell us that there are a number of reasons why this can't be done. The first is that if we included Northern Ireland, then a substantial number of exports from Northern Ireland into the Irish Republic, and there are substantial exports, would be affected. If this instruction were accepted, then there would be an opportunity for this House to consider an amendment in the name of my party colleagues that would restrict the export of animals to the named destinations in the Republic of Ireland only. So it wouldn't affect that trade. But that motion could not, and that amendment cannot be considered unless this instruction is taken by the House and Northern Ireland is included. Now, the Minister is likely to argue that that would be contrary to WTO rules, so there's no point even in proposing such an amendment. But again, there is an area here which the government should be testing. Because even under WTO rules, exceptions can be made. You can exclude trade with certain countries or regions on the basis of animal, the impact on animal welfare health. Now, it might well be that, of course, when it is tested, the rule will prove not to be effective. But at least, by including Northern Ireland in this bill, by accepting the amendment, which would be subsequently capable of being debated in this House and voted on, that exception could be tested. So I think that the first argument, that, look, there's no point in this because any subsequent amendments couldn't work, that is not true. The second reason, that it would stop exports to the Irish Republic, that can be dealt with. The other argument, which I suspect, though the Minister, to be fair, to date has not used this, I don't know if because he doesn't feel it's politic or because he doesn't believe it is important, is that under the Northern Ireland Protocol and the Windsor Framework, Northern Ireland, certain laws made in this House cannot apply to Northern Ireland. Now, the reason for that, according to the EU, is to safeguard the EU single market and to ensure no damage is done to the EU single market. I don't see how anyone could argue that the export of live animals from Northern Ireland to the EU single market damages, or prohibiting that, damages the EU single market. It doesn't stand to reason. So there is no reasons, and no reason, why Northern Ireland cannot be included in this bill. And while this is an unusual procedure, could I point out to the Minister that less than a year ago, this House accepted a similar instruction when it came to the Dathies Law for the transfer of organs for health reasons, without any division. Why? Because there was support in Northern Ireland for it. I'm not aware of any political party in Northern Ireland which would oppose the inclusion of Northern Ireland in the animal welfare legislation which is going forward this House tonight. I would ask the Minister, I promise the Speaker I'll be brief and I'm going to conclude, but I ask the Minister to accept this without division. There's logic to it. The government's got an objective of protecting the welfare of animals. There's a gap which is being identified, that gap can be closed. The inclusion of Northern Ireland in the bill would reinforce the view that Northern Ireland is, and the claim that the government makes, that Northern Ireland is fully part of the United Kingdom. Here is an opportunity for the Minister and for the government to show that that's the case by including Northern Ireland in this piece of legislation, protecting the welfare of animals who will be subject to extreme suffering as a result of being exported all around the European Union. And I hope that the whole House will accept that there is no case, absolutely no case, for excluding Northern Ireland either on constitutional grounds, on grounds of animal welfare, on grounds of the objectives which this government has set itself to protect animal welfare, and that the House will accept this instruction without any opposition so that Northern Ireland's place within the United Kingdom can be recognised, animal welfare can be protected, and the government's objectives can be achieved for every part of the United Kingdom.
The question is that it be an instruction to the committee on the Animal Welfare Livestock Exports Bill that the committee have leave to make provision for the whole of the United Kingdom. The Minister has indicated that he would like to respond at the end to this particular instruction, and I'll call him and any other front benches before then. I'm having one indication, thank you. I now call Stephen Farry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Speaker. And I too will be very brief on this. I have enormous sympathy for this motion of instruction. And just for the record, while we did actually suggest a motion of instruction around Dathies Law, it didn't actually come to that point because the Secretary of State intervened beforehand in a very sensible way. But I do think we have to recognise that Northern Ireland is part of a different legal framework and also a different context, particularly the large-scale movements on the island of Ireland. And indeed, no less than the Ulster Farmers' Union have made representations around the need to treat the issue of the island of Ireland differently from what's happening in terms of Great Britain. We also, and I appreciate that the DEP do wish to have another amendment to cover, or to make an exemption for movements on the island of Ireland. The difficulty there is, though, if we end up in a situation where this is not addressed at a European Union level, you can see a situation where simply we see re-exportation happening in terms of companies based on the Republic of Ireland, which actually defeat the purpose of what they're trying to achieve. The answer really lies in terms of this being addressed at an EU level within Northern Ireland Assembly, hopefully a restored Northern Ireland Assembly, having a pivotal role in that regard and working very closely with local stakeholders, including the Ulster Farmers' Union and indeed local animal welfare organisations. I am conscious that the European Union is actively looking at this issue. And perhaps I could ask the Secretary of State, whenever he's responding, to comment on what steps the UK government could do to support those wider efforts within the European Union, and appreciate we're not part of the EU, at least for now, and how that can be taken best, taken forward. Because I guess it's fair to say that the people of Northern Ireland care as deeply about this issue and animal welfare as their colleagues elsewhere in the UK. But we have to find a bespoke solution that addresses our very particular circumstances. And so I think we have to proceed in that light and appreciate that there is complications here which do require more work to be done. Thank you very much.
You very much, Jim Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. Can I first to say it is a pleasure to speak on this issue and can I also declare an interest, Mr. Deputy Speaker, as a member of the Ulster Farmers' Union and also a landowner. The issue is one which I've been carefully watching for some time, and along with my party, we're discouraged by the fact that this was not a UK-wide bill. And subsequently, we have submitted the amendments, which I trust will be, as my honourable friend, right honourable member for East Antrim referred to, will be accepted by government in the chamber tonight. It is essential that the rules governing this issue are UK-wide and that the animal welfare protection is also UK-wide. This is something that my constituents feel incredibly strong about. And the fact is, as my colleague, the honourable member for East Antrim, has said, the EU's tentacles are wrapping round this should not mean that a bill solely designed to enhance animal welfare is not in place for Northern Ireland. Therefore, our amendment to protect Northern Ireland and its citizens is certainly in place. The Minister and myself and others in this chamber were on the same page when it came to Brexit. And we both sought the same Brexit. Unfortunately, this indicates where we are not, recipients of the same Brexit as a right honourable member of the Minister has. And I understand, Mr. Deputy Speaker, that the Minister appreciates our circumstances and where we are and why the amendments are put down for consideration tonight. For some people, this may highlight that searching for the elusive best of both worlds for the framework only leaves Northern Ireland with no legislative protection for animals. And I'm not sure which person in this is prepared to wash their hands of that responsibility. And looking through my mailbox on this issue, I'm not prepared, and I don't think my party is either, to let things lie as they stand and allow the admission to include Northern Ireland to go without challenge. This is a House where legislative change happens. This is where the protection must be enshrined, and with that in mind. As is well known in this place, I represent the Strangford constituency in a combination of both an urban and rural community. And as such, the impact on farmers is something of great interest and must be at the heart of all our government policy. So I note that the Ulster Farmers' Union and the NFU as well comments on this are clear. I understand the Minister, Mr. Deputy Speaker, is going to come over to visit Northern Ireland shortly. I suspect that these issues may become part of the conversation. I understand it was supposed to be this week, but obviously, details and other commitments make it unable for the right honourable member, the Minister, to be able to attend. And we look very much forward to that occasion and welcome both to my constituency and also to the constituency of the right honourable, the member for Upper Ban. I would ask the Minister to highlight the binding policy when we are expecting our farmers to rightly implement a higher standard of animal welfare. But this is not allowing nations who do not hold that priority undercut us in terms of trade negotiations, and this is essential. So I ask the Minister that, within what we have before us, will our farmers be protected? Will there be difficulties in undercutting us when it comes to trade negotiations? Because those are key issues for my neighbours. I live amongst, in the middle of the farming community. I live, Mr. Deputy Speaker, along those who are involved in dairy farming and beef and sheep farming as well. Government's been quick to rectify differences in legislation between Northern Ireland and the GB mainland and matters such. And I give these examples, the Minister will know them. I'm not going to point the finger, but I'm making the point, if you don't mind me doing so, such as abortion, RSE, teaching Irish language, and Dathies Law as well, which was accepted, by the way, by us all, whereas the first three were very much opposed by ourselves. Yet it seems content, when it comes to an animal welfare bill, debate about this House regarding changes that affect each part of this United Kingdom. They are content that divergence takes place, and this is something that I struggle to grasp and to honestly, Mr. Deputy Speaker, find it very hard to understand. So I'm unsure, Mr. Deputy Speaker, and indeed, a tad flabbergasted at an incredibly personal moral issue government can and will step in. And yet, in the realms of animal welfare, they are content for two sets of rules to remain in place and for the very reasons that are outlined earlier on. Perhaps this too can be explained. I sincerely believe it is essential that this legislation puts in place a higher quality of animal welfare for the entirety of the United Kingdom, Great Britain, and Northern Ireland. And therefore, I would again, very respectfully, Mr. Deputy Speaker, very respectfully and humbly and sincerely say to the Minister and government that our amendments are placed for the purpose of getting it right. So we all have the, we're all equal to the law and subject to the law as we should do. And would ask this House to secure the animal welfare standards throughout all of the United Kingdom, of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland. I'm a great believer, Mr. Deputy Speaker, I've said it many times, others will know it, I always think we're better together, always better together. I say that for everybody, especially my colleagues in Scotland. But the reason why I do that is because I really do believe in the United Kingdom, Great Britain, and Northern Ireland. I believe it's where we want to be, but we want to have the same laws, and that's the point I'm making. I want to be as British as a minister at this moment in time. I don't believe I am. Thank you.
Carla Lockhart.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. And I rise to support the instruction tabled by my colleagues and I. I know that our industry in Northern Ireland takes very seriously the welfare of all animals, and I've never, ever shirked away from enhancing the welfare conditions of animals, whether that be on farm or whilst being transported. Both are of high standards, and I know our farming industry would refute any suggestion that the standards applied to live animal exports from Northern Ireland are of substandard. But however, there's always room and a desire, both from a farming community and from the general public, to enhance our animal welfare standards, because it is a priority right across this United Kingdom. I also think it is worth mentioning that if we are removing a pathway for the fattening and slaughter of animals born on these islands, it is absolutely vital that the government supports investment in this aspect of agri-food industry to increase capacity within this element of our food supply chain. Farmers are looking with suspicion at the direction of travel, which seems to want to drive down production in the UK through legislation that restricts elements of our supply chain, whilst at the same time, we seek out trade agreements with third countries where animal welfare standards are barely an afterthought. There is food for thought for this House and government in terms of consistency. On our instruction today to most people, it is a rather simple ask, and that is to see the laws made for GB apply to Northern Ireland in relation to live animal exports whilst allowing the common sense, essential provisions for ongoing transit of animals to the Irish Republic. And I note the member for North Down's comments, and I do believe they were disingenuous, as our amendments actually cover exports to the Republic of Ireland. Mr. Deputy Speaker, it is for this House to determine the rules for live animal export pertaining to Northern Ireland as we are part of the United Kingdom. And this matter is not devolved. We're always told this is a devolved issue, let the Northern Ireland Assembly decide on this. This matter is not devolved. And as I've said before, animal welfare is a priority for so many. This is our parliament. Yet what we know is that this government appears content to allow those with no democratic mandate to determine laws within a part of the UK to make such laws. The Windsor Framework and Protocol leave us a place apart. I would urge the Minister tonight to accept this very simple ask without division, and one that will allow us to stay aligned with the rest of the United Kingdom. Thank you.
Ruth Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. And I am grateful for the opportunity to speak briefly in this debate on the instruction. And I should be clear at the outset, I don't intend to detain the House any longer than is needed, but I do think it's important to say a few words on the instruction. The right honourable member for East Antrim quite rightly is proud of Northern Ireland's history and heritage within our United Kingdom, and on that, he will find no disagreement from these benches. And I want to reassure him that I heard very clearly his concerns, and I have a great deal of sympathy with the substance of his points. And as we consider the instruction before the House, I want to be very clear, this is an important bill, and it's a bill that will be strengthened by the amendments in my name on the order paper. And the issues that it pertains to are long overdue for attention and action. Now, there's not often much agreement between these benches and the benches opposite, but on this we do agree. Labour will not be able to support the instruction in the name of the member for East Antrim. Because if we accepted the instruction and the follow-through of its intent, we would put the United Kingdom government at risk of breaching World Trade Organisation rules and guidelines. And that's not a situation we can be in. However much we may want to play politics, we need to put the people and trade of this country first, along with the Good Friday Agreement. I accept that the democratic unionists will be frustrated if the instruction is not approved by the House. And without it, they will not be able to secure the changes they want. But the nature of the situation we are in, as such, means that this instruction simply will not work at this time and on this issue. Therefore, if pushed to a division, these benches will oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. And this instruction would need to be agreed if we are to consider certain amendments tabled by the right honourable member for East Antrim in the committee of the whole House. And I'm enormously sympathetic to his plight and his arguments. I am also grateful to him for his time last week in meeting me privately to discuss his proposals, which seeks to add Northern Ireland to the territorial scope of the bill. In effect, his proposal is that the ban on livestock exports for slaughter would apply on a UK rather than a GB-wide basis. Now, there is a crucial difference, as he is aware, between Northern Ireland and the rest of the UK with respect to the movement of livestock. Farmers in Northern Ireland routinely move animals to the Republic of Ireland for slaughter and for fattening. And indeed, in 2022, around 3,500 cattle, 17,000 pigs, and 337,000 sheep were moved in this way. Now, this bill must not jeopardise the access that Northern Irish farmers have to the Republic. And I think that is a point on which, I hope, he and I agree, as all members across the House will do so. But the right honourable gentleman's aim is to create a targeted exemption to the expanded ban. The prohibition would not apply to slaughter movements with an end destination in the Republic of Ireland. Now, unfortunately, this proposal is not an option that is available to us. This is because of a range of international agreements, and their core principles, including WTO rules, prevent discrimination against different countries in this way. So given such a carve-out isn't possible, extending the bill to Northern Ireland would mean an end to all livestock movements, exports for slaughtering and fattening from Northern Ireland, including to the Republic of Ireland. And that's why the bill is drafted in the respect of its territorial extent. Of course, I give way to it.
And the Minister does know that there are eight exceptions listed by the WTO where it is possible to target interventions, trade interventions. And one of them is on the basis of animal health. And does he really believe that taking animals from the north of Northern Ireland, through the whole island of Ireland, a 24-hour boat journey to southern France or southern Spain, without food and part of that journey, part of the sea journey, does he accept that that does risk animal health and therefore, isn't it an exception, which we at least should be testing with the WTO, but can't do if we don't accept this instruction?
So I, as he knows, and as we had in our discussions last week, I'm enormously sympathetic to his view. But as he will be aware, those movements from the Republic of Ireland onto the continent of Europe are a matter for the European Union. That's what we heard from the honourable gentleman whose constituency, I apologise, I've forgotten, North Down, was making. Now, my understanding is the EU are actually looking at some of those rules as we speak. But that is, of course, a matter for the Republic of Ireland and for the EU. And we can't in this House legislate for other nations. But of course, if we were to transpose the word 'Republic of Ireland', for example, with the word Belgium, it would be completely challenged by other nations that you can't favour one single nation above another. So you couldn't say, "We won't export animals for fattening or for slaughter to anywhere in the world apart from Belgium." That would be instantly challenged by the rest of the international trade bodies. And we would lose in court, is the advice I've been given legally. Now, because that is the case, then to try and put forward legislation that we know not to be legally sound is not what the government is in a position to do. And I'm enormously sympathetic to his view and to the, and of course, I agree with him. I don't want to see sheep and cattle moved from Belfast all the way to Madrid. That is not what we want to see happen. But we don't have the power to be able to stop that at this moment in time. So that's why it's critical that we protect the Northern Irish economy. Extending those livestock exports from Northern Ireland in this way would be devastating if we were to stop them moving to the Republic. And I understand the right honourable member's desire for a modified ban to apply in Northern Ireland. However, it's just not possible under our international obligations. And making such a provision for the whole of the United Kingdom in this bill is not appropriate at this moment in time. And I therefore appeal to him respectfully and hopefully that he can find a way to withdraw his motion in the knowledge that we have enormously, enormous sympathy to his position. And I give way to my right honourable friend.
Something intently to the Minister and to my friends on the opposition benches, and having served in Northern Ireland as a minister and in other roles. What is to stop the life, which is what we're trying to do, the live transportation of animals for slaughter, going from Great Britain to Northern Ireland, then going into the South? We're not preventing something which we're trying to actually do. So I know the legal advice, and sometimes ministers have to challenge the legal advice. And I'm not saying the legal advice is right or wrong, but sometimes it has to be challenged. It doesn't clearly make sense if we can move it around inside Great Britain, and we're going to transport animals round and round, transport them to Northern Ireland, and then say, "Northern Ireland, you can't adhere to the rest of the rules in the United Kingdom." I'm very supportive of this bill, don't get me wrong. I don't want to jeopardise it in any shape or form. But it seems to be a conflict of interest in what we're trying to do as a government and actually what we're succeeding to do, which is alienating the farmers of Northern Ireland.
So I'm grateful for that intervention, it's quite important. So very important, number one, we remember, we're talking only about animals that are being exported for either fattening or for slaughter. And under the phytosanitary rules of the island of Ireland, the movement of cattle, sheep, or pigs from England, if you like, to Northern Ireland will then incur a 30-day standstill within Northern Ireland before they could be moved to the Republic. And that actually makes it commercially not viable to use that route to get to slaughter or to fattening. So I hope that colleagues will, with sympathy, understand our frustration that we are unable to do this. But I'll take one last intervention, then I think we really must move on.
Does she agree that the ban on using the Great Britain Land Bridge for live exports is one of the ways in which this bill will actually provide big barriers towards live exports continuing from Northern Ireland?
Well, of course, she's right in that exports, live exports from Northern Ireland to the Republic will be able to continue. That's good for the Northern Irish agricultural economy. And that's what, we do not want to stop that trade. But this bill, when we get to the actual bill, is about stopping those long journeys from GB into continental Europe, which we haven't seen since Brexit, but we want to make sure cannot return in the near future. I will take... I will take one intervention, Mr Deputy Speaker, then I will.
I do thank the minister for allowing me to intervene. And would he term the conundrum posed by the DUP as one of the Brexit benefits that the government has so often extolled the virtues of?
Well, I think this bill is genuinely a Brexit benefit, where we are able to take control of our ports within GB and stop the live export of animals for slaughter or for fattening. It is a genuine Brexit benefit, and one which I hope we will now be able to start in debate. And with that, Mr Deputy Speaker, I hope the honourable man will withdraw his motion.
Thank you. Mr Wilson, do you wish to withdraw the motion? Is it your pleasure that the motion for the instruction be withdrawn?
Aye.
Motion by leave, withdrawn. Order. Order Animal Welfare Livestock Exports Bill. As the House has not agreed to the motion for an instruction, I confirm that amendments six to thirteen are not selected. We begin with amendment two to clause one, with which it will be convenient to consider the other amendments and clauses as listed on the selection paper. And I call Ruth Jones.
Thank you, Mr Evans. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak from these benches on the amendments to the Animal Welfare Livestock Exports Bill that are before this House today. We have tabled our amendments inspired by Labour's proud track record of delivering on animal welfare from ending the testing of cosmetic products on animals, stopping the cruelty of fur farming and cracking down on horrific hunting practices. They allow us to compare our record to this Conservative government and its shameful failures, where they have bottled their manifesto promises to end the sickening import of hunting trophies and crackdown on puppy farming, to name just two of their animal welfare failures. As I indicated at second reading, we on this side welcome this legislation. However, despite our welcome for it, we do regret it has taken so long to bring this unnecessarily cruel trade to an end, and we will seek through our amendments to make the bill fit for the future as much as possible. It will be no surprise, Mr Evans, to the public that they know that Labour is the party of animal welfare. So, before turning to the amendments in my name and those of my honourable friends from Croydon, Hull, Cambridge and Chesterfield, I would like to acknowledge and thank the many campaigners and stakeholders who are watching these proceedings for their hard work, their campaigning and their commitment. Our amendments today do not seek to delay the bill or put the government off doing anything at all. Labour wants to make this bill as strong and purposeful as possible and see it signed into law at the earliest opportunity. The Tories have taken a very weak approach to animal welfare in recent years, from pulling bills that were meant to be debated in this place to caving into the extremists on their back benches.
I do thank the Shadow Minister for allowing me to intervene, and, you know, the Labour Party has long called for a ban on live exports for fattening and slaughter from and through Great Britain. But why does she think that the government has taken so long to bring in this Animal Welfare Livestock Exports Bill, and why does she think that they scrapped the Kept Animals Bill?
My honourable friend makes an excellent point, and to be honest, I'm not sure I know the answer to those questions, so I would be grateful if the minister could perhaps answer it in his wind-ups, because the delay has been too long, as he's already said, and for too long animals have continued to suffer unnecessarily. So, that's why amendments two, three and four, as well as amendment five, are so necessary, and why I'm delighted to speak in support of them today. Now, the minister will know that the export of live animals from the UK grew substantially during the 1960s, 1960s and 1970s. Live sheep exports ranged between 85,000 to 411,000 during the 1960s to the 1980s. At the same time, beef and veal, including live exports, increased from approximately 65,000 in the early 1970s to nearer 200,000 in the 1980s, while live pig exports rose dramatically from 30,000 to 60,000 in the 1970s, peaking at 619,000 in 1982. The dramatic rises then, and the patterns we have seen more recently, make amendments two, three and four so important, they are probing and preventative in equal measure. These amendments force us to think about the macro picture facing us, and also highlight a major inadequacy in this bill, that on the face of the bill, ministers have chosen to list the species covered by this legislation. We agree and support the listed species, but what happens when they are banned? Where do those seeking to profit from the live export of animals, where do they look next? Which species and which animals are going to be moved up the pecking order? I apologise for the pun, Mr Evans. Amendments two, three and four, like amendment one, in the name of the former leader of the Liberal Democrats, which we support, will help force ministers to take up and recognise a comprehensive and bigger-picture approach, not a race to the bottom to get the bare minimum over the line, and no more of a government simply wanting an easy life. And we will also demonstrate to our constituents from Newport West to Northampton North, and from Epping Forest to Erwosh, that this Parliament takes animal welfare seriously, and we have a plan to get things right. I'd like to turn to amendment five in my name and my colleague's name, Mr Evans. This is a very important amendment, which would allow the appropriate national authority to extend by statutory instruments subject to the affirmative procedure, the list of livestock species which may not be exported for slaughter. As clause one of the bill sets out, the prohibition on live exports would currently apply to calves, sheep, pigs, wild boar, goats and equines. Whilst these are historically the main farmed animal group subject to live exports for slaughter, this is not an exclusive list, and other animals could potentially be exported live from GB. It's also the case that a lack of historical precedent for a particular animal is not a guarantee that live exports will not take place in the future, especially as UK livestock farming continues to evolve. And that's why we must be vigilant and take whatever preventative measures we can, and we have a unique opportunity to do this with amendment five today. We on this side believe that it is reasonable for the Secretary of State and the devolved governments in Holyrood and Cardiff Bay to have the power to extend the export ban to other species if they felt that the science justified such a move. It may be that the power is never needed, but it would seem sensible to allow the possibility that other species may need to be added to the exclusion list in future, without the need for further primary legislation. Now, amendment five would provide this enabling power, allowing the Secretary of State here in England and the Scottish and Welsh ministers in Scotland and Wales to add additional groups of livestock to the scope of the bill through a statutory instrument subject to the affirmative procedure. This would effectively future-proof the bill and properly make it fit for purpose. Of course, I will.
Figuring way, I'm proud to support this bill and the Labour Party's amendments to it to add deer, alpacas and llamas to the definition of livestock that is covered by this ban. However, I am conscious that this is the government who faltered on ending imports of hunting trophies and shied away from cracking down on puppy farming. How does the Shadow Minister think that we can ensure that this bill will be enforced properly if our amendments are successful today?
My new friend for intervening there, and he's quite right, as he says, you know, we must make sure that what happens today, we future-proof this bill. I'm not convinced at the moment that the government is completely sympathetic to all our amendments, which I find surprising. So, I would like to move on, but I would say that as a comparable example, if the minister's looking for examples, a similar power exists in the Animal Welfare Sentience Act 2022. Clause five, subsection two in that act essentially says that should the science materialise in sufficient strength to persuade the Secretary of State of the day of the need to identify other animals as sentient beings, other species can be added to the legislation via secondary legislation. The suggested addition to the livestock exports bill would follow this precedent, and I would urge the minister to do the right thing and accept the amendment. And if the minister doesn't want to do it for me, I hope he will do it, because the minister who took the animal sentience bill through the House did exactly the same, and I pay tribute to the Honourable Member for Bury St Edmunds for doing that. This simple holistic measure could help expedite the progression of the bill through Parliament, and wouldn't that be a good thing for one and all? I want the minister to know that by tabling amendment five, I am trying to be helpful, and I hope he will accept my help and accept amendment five. If the same principle is good for some animal welfare legislation, then it's got to be good for all animal welfare legislation. Turning to the amendments before the House today, as you know, Mr Evans, I've already indicated that amendment one, rather like amendments two, three and four in my name, will do important work and would have the support of these benches if pushed to a vote. Today, we are seeking to amend this bill to ban the live exports of alpacas, llamas and deer, and ensure that species can be added to the legislation at a later date. It's about future-proofing the legislation and making it fit for purpose. Amendment five is important, and as it was discussed in The Telegraph today, and I know the minister obviously is an avid reader of The Telegraph, and there is a very interesting poll in that newspaper, which talks about constituency-led MRP polling carried out in September 2023, which found that more than two-thirds of the British public feel that a political party announcing plans to pass more laws designed to improve animal welfare and protect animals from cruelty would have the right priorities. I hope the minister will accept our amendments, and if not, be as detailed as possible in explaining the excuses, because the people of this country are crying out for change and for a government with the right priorities, and if the Tories can't deliver that, they should get out the way, because we can.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. Well, I'm delighted that the strong cross-party support for this bill is evident here in the chamber this evening. We all want to end live exports, and after the disappointments of the Kept Animals Bill, it's heartening to see the rapid progress that this new piece of legislation is making in this House. Of course, the earlier bill was blighted by a range of opposition amendments on other different issues, not really relevant to the core problem of preventing animals suffering in long-distance transportation. And I welcome the fact that the amendments tabled today are less controversial and more specific to the matter the bill seeks to address. On the matter of Northern Ireland, I would certainly like to see the ban on live exports applied to Northern Ireland, but I'm also very much aware of the need to comply with international trade rules. Animals are routinely moved across the border into the South for slaughter, these are essentially local movements, and so don't give rise to the same animal welfare concerns as long-distance transportation and exports. And preventing entirely those north-to-south movements would, I think, be problematic. But finding a way to legislate to allow those exports to the Republic of Ireland to continue, but all others from the UK to stop, is not straightforward, particularly as the most favoured nation principle means that what trade benefits we give to one country outside of a formal trade agreement, we should generally offer to all trading partners. And there are exceptions to that, and some of them do include public concerns and ethical considerations. I do accept that, but there is a problem which is not easy to solve there. And so, it's not just the Windsor Framework standing in the way of applying this new law to Northern Ireland, but I think the House should recognise that the ban on using Britain as a land bridge for such exports is likely to make them difficult to continue in practice. And I hope the question of Northern Ireland is one to which this House can return on a future date as part of a wider reform to address the inadequacies of the Windsor Framework, and so this bill can genuinely apply across the board. And I'd certainly like to hear from ministers whether there is action that we can take to see to prevent any re-export of UK animals from the Republic of Ireland. But for the moment, I do feel, much as I understand and sympathise with the points made by the DUP this evening, I do think the priority has to be to get this bill on the statute book as the best means to prevent the resumption of transport of live animals to continental Europe for slaughter. Mr Deputy Speaker, with a few honourable exceptions, the party opposite did everything they could to thwart Brexit and prevent the referendum result from being respected. Time and again, Labour MPs would stand up and demand a second referendum, or they wanted us locked forever in the regulatory orbit of the EU, applying its single-market rules without any say over them. If they'd succeeded, I'm afraid we wouldn't be having this debate today. The trade in live export would have continued as it has for decades, protected by the European Court of Justice and single-market rules. There were many times in this House, during those seemingly endless Brexit votes, when it felt like Labour remainers would be successful in stopping Brexit from taking place. And of course, the current leader of the opposition was amongst the most vocal on this. It felt like the power of the Remain-supporting establishment would be too strong, but people in this country held out. The 2019 election sent a clear signal that they wanted us to get Brexit done, and because of that decisive result and the exit treaty it enabled the government to negotiate, we can now finally make our own decisions over our own laws in this country, including on animal welfare and live exports. The right to be governed only by laws made by the people we elect in this Parliament and to whom we can hold account was hard-won over centuries. Now it's been restored to us, let us use it to improve protection for vulnerable sentient creatures who have no means to defend themselves from cruel treatment. And because we rear millions of animals for food, we have a special responsibility to ensure the welfare of farmed animals, which do not exist without our intervention. To let them be exported over excessively long distances, subject to the stresses and strains and suffering of which we're all so familiar, to jurisdictions with lower standards and poorer compliance with such rules as do exist, means failing to live up to that moral responsibility to those farmed animals. We in this country have some of the most extensive legal protections for animals of any country in the world, and a domestic farming sector committed to the highest standards of animal welfare. This reflects the longstanding recognition in this country of the crucial importance of animal welfare, and that dates back to before the Victorian era. It wasn't just the anti-slavery campaign that motivated William Wilberforce, but also the need to protect animals, as he was one of the founder members of the RSPCA when it was set up in 1824. So, today allows us to use our new Brexit freedoms in a really positive way, Mr Speaker, to continue our country's long-held mission to prevent cruelty to animals, to implement a change for which our constituents have been calling for many years, and to ensure that the animals we produce in this country retain the protection of the laws we make in this country. I'm someone amongst others in this House who's championed reform in this area for many years as an MEP, as a Secretary of State and as a back-bencher, and I strongly urge honourable members to support the bill in the division lobby this evening, so we can end live exports once and for all.
Just to remind the House that the occupant of this chair is not acting as Deputy Speaker, but as Chair of the Committee of the Whole House. I did try, but anyway, we all know. Alex Sobel.
Thank you, Chair. This is an issue that I'm personally passionate about. I've spoken on animal welfare issues on both the back and the opposition front bench many, many times since coming to this place six years ago. I just want to start by saying I'm very pleased that the Labour front bench is supporting the bill, but recognises the need to strengthen provisions in the bill and for protection of animal welfare to go much further. All animals deserve protection, and the two things I know about the British public is, one, they are disappointed it's taken us so long to get here, and secondly, they want to see much more. Where is the ban on keeping primates as pets? Where's the foie gras ban? Where's the action on puppy smuggling? And where and why is a trophy hunting ban not through and as an act? The bill is long, long overdue. If we remember, in the 2019 general election, the Conservative Party had this prohibition and many other animal welfare policies in their manifesto. Five years have passed, we have had setback after setback on this. I think maybe it reflects the number of Prime Ministers we've seen over the period and their varying views on animal welfare. But this is just the last in a series of delays that are being put right. I just want to say, last year, when I was on the front bench, I was hugely disappointed that the government abandoned the Kept Animals Bill. They even voted against their own policy when I was at the dispatch box trying to bring it back, they voted against their own... They voted against a number of their own policies, and the British public will not forget. And I have to say that maybe the Secretary of State for DEFRA is different now, but the minister is the same minister who opposed that then. And how many animals have needlessly suffered because of this delay? There are victims here. This is not a victimless delay. It took a private members' bill from the Honourable Member for Guildford to tackle animal exploitation, the wild tourism industry, a measure that we did all support. And the entire approach of the government, which they now seem to have abandoned for a whole year, was to try and get animal welfare improvements through private members' bills. I'm glad that we're back now to having government bills on these issues. But where is the animal abroad bill?
Just to help the Honourable Member, could he really refer to what amendments or new clauses? Because it does sound awfully like a second reading speech.
Comments? Thank you, Mr Chair. I'll come to those now. The amendments in the name of my honourable friend for Newport West include a number of provisions to extend the bill. I just want to maybe speak for a little bit on alpacas, which is, I believe, amendment two that she has put down. In my constituency, I've seen a growth in alpaca farming. There is alpacas in Cookridge in my constituency, all the way to Leeds Bradford Airport. Meanwood Valley urban farms, just over the border in my honourable friend for Leeds North East constituency, has alpacas. And I recently, on Queen's Way in Eden, spotted a number of alpacas in a field. This is clearly an area of expansion in the British farming industry. But also, if you look, there's quite a number of alpaca breeding, which just, I think, reflects the lack of need now to export live alpacas in the country, because there's enough alpaca depth of farming to carry on that work. And I think the same goes for other animals, including llamas and, I can't remember the third animal, but I'll come back to it. Deer, sorry, deer, that's right. Deer, we're actually overrun with deer. We certainly don't need to have the export of deer.
Being overrun by deer is a forestry usually, and they're a wild animal. It's not covered by this bill, and certainly not covered by these amendments.
I thank the honourable member. There is obviously wild deer and farmed deer for venison, so there are both types of deer in this country. I'll conclude, not to hold up the debate for too long. As my honourable friend said, the Labour Party is the party of animal welfare. It is a strong priority of the Labour Party. Labour has long called for the ban on live export slaughter. Every year, millions of farmers risk facing long-distance journeys, including these new animals that we have put amendments down for. And amendment five is there to future-proof this bill, because particularly as climate changes, farming will change, and we need to be able to evolve and update this legislation as practices change. So I'm supporting the amendments two, three, four and five in my honourable friend's name, and I hope to see this bill go much further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I strongly welcome this particular Measure the Animal Welfare Livestock Exports bill. It's absolutely right that we ban this disgusting practice. We've driven it from Dover, and this bill, when it becomes law, will mean it cannot come back, and that is fantastic news. This is an issue of great interest and impact on my constituency, because at its peak, we saw 100 transportations through the port of this particular activity. And local excellent campaigners, particularly Yvonne and Ian Burchell, the Kent Action Against Live Exports, have worked tirelessly over decades to actually see us get to this position, and I congratulate them for that. Now, they've been very diligent in keeping me informed and keeping many members across this House informed of the pernicious activities of this particularly despicable trade. But I've never heard them mention to me a concern about reindeer in the name of the member for Westmoreland and Lonsdale. And I will come on to the other breeds that have been mentioned specifically in amendments before the House today. Because this issue is a particular one that is still alive in the constituency which I have the honour to represent. And this came to the fore with the introduction of Irish ferries, who came as the third ferry provider into Dover a short time ago. And I very strongly welcome them into Dover. But when they arrived, I did have to seek assurances from them that they would not be doing live exports across the channel. And the reason for that has been very well explored in the instruction debate, because this is something that can and does happen in the island of Ireland. And it is concerning, and it's concerning in relation to the land bridge issue, that a difference will continue to exist between parts of our United Kingdom. I think it's unfortunate that such an important change that we're making today, which is enabled because of those Brexit freedoms, actually draws fresh light on that growing gap since the implementation of the Windsor Framework. And I would welcome the minister's comments on the effectiveness of the road bridge, because I think something where we are legislating means that this is important enough to legislate. And an answer that relies on a commercial solution suggests that that is a weaker position than I think some of us would like to see in relation to that land bridge. So looking at the amendment five, if I may, and the member for Newport West in the name of the opposition. Now, I note that this seeks to apply a regulatory extension, secondary legislation, in relation to this important issue for deer, llama and alpaca. Now, I'm mindful that even the campaign group Compassion in Farming have said in the last 48 hours that they are not aware of any activity that would fall into the fattening and slaughter definition that we're looking at today of those particular breeds. And the reason I particularly would draw the minister's attention to this is in the context of the comments he has already made for the WTO and the other international trading laws to which the UK is subject. And I would just pause on that moment, to which the UK is subject as a whole, not just Great Britain. So I would be grateful for the minister's comments on whether he considers that this amendment could be potentially weaker in law and more open to challenge than an amendment in primary legislation, as he's doing on the face of the bill in relation to those other specific breeds. And the reason I think this is particularly important to address is that the House of Commons library has confirmed that this issue in relation to the WTO, the application of international trading laws and our domestic compliance with it, is open to challenge in relation to this primary legislation that we are bringing forward today. And therefore, I'd be grateful for the minister's comments in relation to the amendment that is before us, since it is of a different nature within the legislative framework and may be treated differently. And within that context, I draw back to the remarks that I made in relation to the assessed risk or likelihood of these particular breeds. Because if this is just a theoretical or umbrella arrangement, then the minister may have a particular reflection on whether or not that is more likely or less likely to be challenged in relation to our international trading obligations. So I do strongly welcome this particular provision. I'm very pleased that we have got to this stage in this House and look forward to this matter concluding at other stages rapidly. But I do think that there are important issues to address in relation to considering the other amendments before us today, and I look forward to the minister's comments.
Order. Just to remind the remaining speakers that they should really be focusing on amendments and clauses, and they should be speaking to those, not making a second reading debate speech. Sammy Wilson.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And of course, my party had amendments to this bill which cannot be discussed and cannot be decided on because of the earlier decision that was made in relation to the instruction which was given to the House to include Northern Ireland in the scope of the bill. Many of the amendments which are down here this evening, of course, we would be supporting, because we believe that the scope of this bill should be as wide as possible. And that while there are specific animals mentioned in this bill, there may well be other animals in future that would be subject to exports. But I don't know if those moving the amendments have noted the irony of what we are discussing at present. This is a bill to ban the export of live animals. And we are seeking by various amendments to make sure that any other animals which are not named in the bill can also be included. But here's the irony. Since 2020, the area of the United Kingdom to which this bill applies has not exported any live animals. The only part of the United Kingdom where there's a substantial export of live animals is the part of the United Kingdom which is not included in this bill. Now, I don't know if people noticed the irony of that. And it's one of the reasons why, in fact, one of the defences I remember at the time when there was criticism of the government for not bringing forward the legislation was that, well, we haven't had any live exports. Now, of course, we could have live exports in the future. But the bill is addressing an issue which is not an issue for the area included in the scope of the bill and ignores the part of the United Kingdom where there are massive exports. And, you know, some of the speakers already mentioned, well, at least the problem of exports will be made a bit less of an issue because the land bridge is no longer available for exports from Northern Ireland to the rest of Europe. That is not the answer, because of course, they will simply use a more circuitous journey and a more torturous journey through the Irish Republic. I first became involved in this, Madam Chairman, about, I think it was maybe 20 years ago. And I was on a motorbike holiday through the Alps in France. Hadn't spoken to anybody who could speak English for about two weeks. And I noticed a lorry with a Northern Ireland registration number on it. I was also a member of Belfast City Council at the time. We had closed our abattoir because of the conditions that did not meet the EU conditions. And I thought, there's somebody from Northern Ireland. I'm going to follow that lorry, and when it stops, at least I'll have somebody I can talk to. I'll find somebody who can speak English, and English which my sort of English understands. Followed along a windy road through the Alps outside a town called Neones, and I finally stopped at an abattoir in a small village. Unloaded sheep, sheep that had come from outside Ballamina. Had gone to come down through the Irish Republic, across, because the driver told me, through France, up into the Alps. A journey which had taken me on the motorbike, not because I was going slow either, it had taken me about three days. And these animals were being transferred to a slaughterhouse. I wanted, because I was interested in the issue, I wanted to see what the slaughterhouse was like. We had closed the slaughterhouse in Belfast. And the place that these animals were being taken to be and transferred for slaughter from Northern Ireland was like an outhouse of the slaughterhouse that we had closed in Northern Ireland, because it did not meet EU standards. Now, and that awoke me. I didn't think that animals, first of all, were transported that distance. But it awoke me to the issue. And this bill, even with the amendments which have been put down tonight, this bill will still leave that route open. And the objective which the government is seeking to achieve will not be achieved. And it's ironic that we have got a bill about animal welfare which ignores the main source of concern about the transport of animals across the continent of Europe. The second thing I would say is this, and I know what the minister said about the challenges. I wonder has the minister considered the challenges, which even the library has highlighted this, the challenges which under WT rules can be made to this bill? There's a reason for not including Northern Ireland. And he would like to comment on the challenges which the government anticipates might occur and what the response would be. Is it going to use the response of exceptions? And the last thing that I want to say, and I've emphasised it in my own speech earlier on, and other members have mentioned it. Unlike the member from the Lands Party who is not here, I am more concerned about the objective of this bill, protecting the welfare of animals, than being too concerned about protecting the relationship which we have through the Windsor Framework with the EU. And I've got to say, I find it disgraceful that someone who represents a constituency where I know there's a large concern about animal welfare is more concerned about what is our relationship, and we've got to keep good relations with the EU, rather than respect and deal with the animal welfare considerations of one of the biggest exporting regions of live animals in the United Kingdom. And I wish the bill well. It may well be that without this bill, there would be a return to live animal exports. It might well be us addressing a problem which is not there in GB, which is there in Northern Ireland, but it's not going to be addressed. And I hope that it won't be a loophole, because unfortunately, as a result of the agreements which this government has made in respect of Northern Ireland with the EU, even the hunting trophy bill, which the honourable member across the way spent so much time on, is in jeopardy of being circumvented because the exports of the hunting trophies could come through Northern Ireland and get into GB. It's a problem which is addressed. It's one of those issues which needs to be addressed, and it will not be addressed by legislation such as this. This will only exacerbate the difference between the part of the United Kingdom which I belong to and the United Kingdom. Yes, and I'll give way.
Grateful to the honourable gentleman for giving way. He's been speaking very eloquently in this House this evening on two very important principles, which I hope every member of this House will support. That of the principle of the union of the United Kingdom, of Great Britain and Northern Ireland, and also the principle of ending suffering through improved animal welfare. And whilst I am sorry that the amendment that he sought to bring did not come to a vote this evening, I hope that the government will reflect on the fact that whether it is live animal exports from the United Kingdom or the importation of the body parts of endangered species, that those principles of the whole union and of animal welfare should be paramount.
And I thank you for the intervention, and I hope the minister will listen to that. Because otherwise, despite all of the amendments which there are to this bill and which are pushed to a vote tonight, we will be supporting. But despite all of the amendments, the problem will still exist. It will not have been addressed, and the protection of animals, which this bill is designed to give, will not be fulfilled.
Sir Mike Penning.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Can I speak to the amendments, particularly the amendments that, in good faith, I think the opposition front bench have put down, but I think there are issues with them? I think if we are looking at this as a nation, and if we're honest about why there's been so little exploitation or no exporting of live animals, that was public opinion that made that happen. That's what happened to stop it at Dover and some of the smaller parts. I had the honour of being a researcher for the late and departed Sir Teddy Taylor, former MP for Rochford and South End East, who amongst many things actually campaigned so hard to ban the life export of animals. And before I came into this House, as Madam Speaker might know, I did a little bit of journalism and amongst many other things. And we followed lorries, like the honourable gentleman has done. gentleman has done as journalists, down to Italy, believe it or not, without them being stopped for fodder or for water. So I get where this is absolutely coming from, but to ask the House now to pick on animals that might sometime in the future be moved for fattening and for slaughter, like llamas or like deer, I think is actually stretching the imagination of what this could be for. This places for debate, and the front bench disagree with me, absolutely get that, but this is what I'm sent here to do, to actually express a view. I have major problems in our forestry with deer, not just monkjack, but other deer, to such an extent some of our farmers are going to give up their leases to actually farm some of the land, which is National Trust land. That's where they're telling me that it's not viable. But we're not going to export those deer, we're not going to be sent across for fattening. Llamas are not going to be sent down for fattening and for slaughter. This is targeted at an industry, and I have every sympathy with my old friends in Northern Ireland, I know exactly where they're coming from this, but whether or not it's going to be financially viable for the wholesalers, which is normally who's involved in it, to take, say for instance cattle from the province into the Republic and then send them on that huge sea where the cost effective of doing that probably is going to be, it just isn't going to happen. But that's not what we're sent here to do, we're sent here to protect, not be viable with our money, we're sent here to protect. This bill is important. Yes, I would like to have seen it earlier, I think we all would have done that, it was a manifesto commitment, so I stood on, and I actually think manifesto commitments are quite important. But I also don't think we can divide this parliament's, this sovereign parliament, those duties to, for instance, the Scottish Assembly or the Scottish Parliament or to the Welsh Parliament. I just don't think that's right. This is for this country to set what is right and wrong in those international obligations. I agree.
They says it's unlikely that with the closure of the land bridges, it'll make it less commercial for animals to be exported that way. This is a response I had from the Agriculture Minister in Northern Ireland, talking about the export of animals from Northern Ireland via Dublin and then on to Le Havre or Ross Lere and on to Le Havre. And as we said, any analysis by my officials has shown that calves exported from Northern Ireland via the Republic of Ireland port Dublin or Ross Lere are rested on a truck in the Irish Republic for at least one hour before sailing to France. It has not been considered necessary to date to feed the calves during this rest period to achieve compliance with EU regulations. It's happened, it's already, it was happening before this legislation. It has closed one route, i.e. the land bridge, and is likely to lead to even greater suffering. And the EU regulations and the department officials don't even consider it cruel to rest the animals for one hour and send them on a 24-hour boat journey without any food.
Madam Chair, this house thinks it's cruel and that's why we're going to change this legislation today. What our European friends do, frankly, now we're out of there, is down to them, we can talk to them, be friends with them, do lots of things with them, but actually, we don't have to do what they tell us to do anymore and that is, I think, is quite crucial. There is one amendment that if the opposition benches had to put down or the government wanted to put down, that I'd be the first one or even telling on it this evening, Madam Chair, and that's foie gras. Because I cannot understand, and I said this at second reading, and we're talking about amendments that should be on the order paper, why on earth is something banned in this country because it's cruel to be produced and we allow it to be imported into this country and sold in this country? That is a mistake in the bill and I'm sure there's amendments that may be tabled in the other house. I'm sure if these amendments were tabled in this house, it would be wrong, but to me, those are the amendments that should be on. Perhaps I'll speak a bit more at third reading, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Matt Rodder.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's a pleasure to be able to speak tonight. And I want to speak in favour of the Labour amendments and also to briefly pay tribute to constituents who raised these very important matters with me and with other colleagues tonight. I do want to stress the scale of public interest in this issue, it is significant and like other colleagues here, I've had a very large amount of correspondence and we all want to see this changed. We don't want to see live animal exports in any shape or form and I do appreciate the effort that my colleagues have gone to identify potential future risks and I think we should take that quite seriously. I do welcome the legislation, Madam Chair, but I also regret the delays it coming to the House and it coming to the House. And I also would like to ask the government again to try to support wider measures to improve animal welfare and I'd like to commend the work of the Honourable Gentleman from Crawley and also the Honourable Member for Hemel who spoke recently about the possibility of tackling foie gras as well. And I do think these are very serious points in the work that the Honourable Gentleman from Crawley has done on live animal, on, sorry, on trophy hunting, I think it's excellent and I was proud to be able to support his work on that matter. Just turning to the Labour amendments though, which are in the name of my friend, the Shadow Minister, as she said, the bill as it stands at the moment does leave open the possibility of other mammals being exploited and she's right to point that out because actually, some of the species that are mentioned in the Labour amendments are species which are now farmed in the UK. There is both deer farming and obviously the hunting of deer in woodland. I've seen llamas being farmed in the Thames Valley and I do understand that there's the possibility that these species could be traded and I am concerned about that and I think we're right on this side of the House to raise these points. I also think that the point that my honourable friend made about the way that the live animal export trade developed very rapidly and expanded between 10 and 20 times in its scale over a 10-year period is a very salutary reminder of what some unscrupulous businesspeople are willing to do in this industry. And so I would urge the government to think again about these probing amendments, I do think they're wise and sensible and I think they highlight some potential serious future risks as agriculture changes and develops. And I do think we would be wise to address that by looking at these species and adding them to the face of the bill and ensuring that these animals are protected in the same way that other animals are. So I would urge ministers to consider that. I do hope they'll treat these amendments in the thoughtful way that they have been made by the front bench on our side and I would urge them once again to look at this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, no interest. Rachel Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm pleased to be able to speak in support of Labour's amendments two, three, four and five to the Animal Welfare Bill and particularly regarding to ban the live exports of alpacas, llamas and deer and to ensure that species can be added to the legislation as later date. And as the Shadow Minister said, we support the bill, but these amendments will ensure the legislation is future-proofed and fit for purpose. Ending the cruel trade of live exports for slaughter and fattening is long overdue. Millions of farmed animals are at risk of facing long journeys which can cause a mental exhaustion, physical injuries, hunger, dehydration and stress. And that's because we know animal welfare can be compromised during long-distance live transport and that would include, you know, inappropriate stocking densities, inadequate ventilation and temperature control systems and unsuitable feeding and watering facilities. But as has already been mentioned, proposals for banning livestock exports were previously included in the Animal Welfare Kept Animals Bill, which was thrown out by the government last May, but the public have been pressing for urgent action. A recent parliamentary petition calling for the UK government to find the time to take the Kept Animals Bill through Parliament and make it law was signed by over 100,000 UK residents and my constituents across Luton and Carrington, Slipendin, Hyde feel strongly about this issue, whether they're farmers who care deeply for the living standards of their livestock or consumers who expect to be able to buy ethically-reared produce. Labour's long called for a ban on live exports for slaughter and fattening from or through Great Britain and we recognise that not only passing this bill, but putting down amendments to improve the bill is important and an important step to asserting our reputation as a nation of animal lovers and prepared to act against any cruel treatment they face. And in fact, Labour has a track record of doing so in government, from ending the testing of cosmetic products on animals in 1998, to stopping the cruelty of fur farming in 2000, the introduction of the Hunting Act in 2004 and bringing in the landmark Animal Welfare Act in 2006. But unlike our actions, this government has dithered and delayed somewhat, as has been mentioned by members on both sides of the House. It delayed action on livestock exports and made a manifesto promise to end the sickening import of hunting trophies, as so eloquently put previously. So just as I conclude, I want to reiterate my support for amendments two, three, four and five. I want to welcome the bill to end the livestock exports and the fact it will contribute to continuing on the path to improving animal welfare standards. Thank you.
SNP spokesman Stephen Bonner.
Dear Mr, it's nice to see you in the chair this evening. Obviously, I would speak from a Scottish perspective. This bill does legislate in an area that is largely devolved to Scotland and the Scottish government and we in the SNP are committed to maintaining high animal welfare standards and protecting our farmers and our agricultural communities. The Scottish government has given consent to this bill and the relevant LCM has been laid in horror by the Scottish minister. The SNP Scottish government prefers consistent and animal transport legislation right across Great Britain and that of course makes necessary UK-level regulation in this area. However, we must continue to make clear that any changes must not disadvantage Scottish farmers, particularly regarding livestock movements between the Scottish islands and the Scottish mainland. The bill does indeed make provisions in this area and seeks to protect Scotland's unique characteristics in doing so. In relation to the amendments tabled by the opposition, in terms of amendment two, three and four, or indeed to amendment one from the Liberal Democrats, we see no notable cause for concern. In terms of amendment five, in the name of the Honourable Lady of the opposition front bench, we would be supportive of it seems. So should the government not support amendment five tonight, then we would be voting for it, should the House divide later tonight. The SNP and the Scottish government stand resolute in our commitment to safeguarding animal welfare, pledging to legislate continuously to enhance the wellbeing of animals both in Scotland and across the United Kingdom. So as we forge ahead, we are looking to ensure that our actions align with our values of compassion and responsibility towards the animals that share this world. Now, I will have more to say when we go into the remaining stages of this bill, but just for now, I'd like to thank all those interested parties, stakeholders and animal welfare activists and campaigners on reaching this milestone here today. It's been two years and four defra ministers since the Kept Animals Bill was first mooted and of course shelved. There is so much more work to be done in specific areas and we'll go on to more of that at the next stages. To reach this point is pleasing for many interested parties across the United Kingdom and I congratulate them for that. Thank you.
Minister Mark Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to move and speak to these amendments and I'm grateful to honourable members for their continued interest and engagement in ensuring that this ban on live animal exports for slaughter is effective and comprehensive. The question of which species should be included in the ban is indeed crucial and is according a question to which we have given careful consideration. When we carried out wide-ranging consultation on banning live exports in 2020, we were clear about the species which we were seeking to apply the ban to. We received no evidence then and have received nonsense that a ban on other species was at all necessary. In the 10 years prior to EU exit, the live export trade for slaughter and for fattening may be involved sheep and unweaned calves. The number of deer, llamas and alpacas kept in the UK are extremely low compared to the species for which a significant slaughter export trade had existed in the past. So, for example, in 2021, a June agricultural census records, there were around 45,000 farmed deer, 12,000 alpacas and 1,000 llamas in the United Kingdom. That compares to 33 million sheep, 10 million cattle and around 35,000 cattle and 220,000 sheep are slaughtered every week in England and Wales. So I can also reassure the honourable member for Westmoreland, whose amendment has been tabled, who's not in his place, that his concerns about reindeer, although reindeer are kept in the UK, they're not really farmed, they're small in the number and of course they're imported mostly for use in visitor attractions, especially at Christmas. Now, we're not aware of any species proposed in these amendments being exported for slaughter or for fattening and quite important to make that distinction that we are talking about the export of animals for slaughter and for fattening. So whilst the number of llamas and alpacas may be increasing, they are not consumed for meat in the United Kingdom. And so whilst there's no evidence that there is demand for trade in live exports from the EU to elsewhere, the definition of relevant livestock covers all of the live exports where major animal welfare concerns have been identified and where a trade has existed in the past. So of course I give way to my...
I'm very grateful to the minister for giving way and he's detailing the species that are involved in the bill and which potentially are not involved. One of the key species, and I hear what my friends and the DUP say about animal health and welfare issues in Northern Ireland, very sympathetic to many of the issues, not least the supply of veterinary medicines in Northern Ireland, but points that have been made is that there have been not live exports from the mainland since Brexit, but actually, on the Afra Select Committee, we've taken much evidence from World Horse Welfare, and horses are species that is included in this bill, that hundreds, if not thousands of horses have been illegally exported to Europe under the guise of sport or breeding when actually they've been exported for slaughter. And this very welcome bill will stop that illegal movement of these horses.
Well, I pay tribute to my honourable friend, not only for his comments then, but for the work that he's done on campaigning against the export of horses for slaughter. He's a tenacious campaigner in this area and I pay tribute to him in the work that he has done in that area. I do understand honourable members' desire to ensure that the ban applies to all livestock species and I share their ambition to see exports on the hook rather than on the hoof. However, I firmly believe that the current definition is comprehensive, it's enough already, particularly when you take into account the past data on slaughter export trade and I hope I've reassured members on that point. I therefore ask honourable members to withdraw their amendments two, three, four, one and five. Obviously, Madam Chairman, amendments six to 12 have fallen, so if I can just turn to some of the general points made by colleagues within the debate, and I think there was this sort of commentary that we've done, very little on animal welfare as a government, indeed honourable members listed the three or four things that the Labour Party had done whilst it was in power. But I think it would be remiss not to just remind the House briefly of some of the things that this government has done, not least of all recognise animal sentience in law and launch the committee on which it advised government.
Honourable gentleman, certain that he wants to do that at this stage or to save it for a third reading where it would be more appropriate?
I can, I could do it in both, Madam Chairman, if she'd allow me, but I...
Kind of suggesting that also being...
Well, I'm not someone that understands subtlety all the time, Madam Chairman, but on this occasion, you seem to have broken through and I will take your inspiration and consider those comments and talk about it in third reading. But I hope I've done enough to reassure colleagues across the House that these amendments are not necessary, something we do take seriously. And to be clear, if there was a change in the dietary habits of our colleagues within the European Union and they decided to start and consume other species of animal like llamas or alpacas or squirrels or whatever you want to consider, we would of course have the ability to come back to this House to introduce new legislation to stop that trade. But at this moment in time, it covers all of those necessary exports. I hope that colleagues will, on this occasion, decline those amendments and support the bill as taped.
Ruth Jones.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Chair. I don't wish to detain the House any longer than is strictly necessary and I do welcome the speed through which we've gone through it this evening, but it does beg a belief that it's taken so long to bring this unnecessarily cruel trade to an end and that's why Labour does... why Labour does support this bill. We've long called for the ban on live exports for slaughter and fattening from or through Great Britain. And it's already been said in, you know, very expert speeches that every year, millions of farmed animals are at risk of facing long distant journeys, exporting them for fattening and slaughter, causing unnecessary suffering to animals. So, we would accept the going forward now onto the vote. And in terms of the amendments, we are willing to withdraw two, three and four, but we do wish to pursue amendment five. I will leave it there. Thank you.
But the honourable lady has indicated that she wishes to withdraw the lead amendment, amendment two. Is it your pleasure that the amendment be withdrawn?
Aye.
Amendment by leave withdrawn. So, we now come to amendment five, to clause one, which has been selected for a separate decision. Ruth Jones to move formally.
Move formally?
The question is that amendment five, as on the order paper, be made. Does that opinion say aye?
Aye.
Of the contrary, no?
No.
Division, clear the lobby. Order, order.
The ayes to the right, 217, the noes to the left, 293.
The ayes to the right, 217, the noes to the left, 293. So the noes have it. The noes have it. With the leave of the House, I shall take clauses one to seven together. The question is that clauses one to seven stand part of the bill. Does that opinion say aye?
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Order, order. Order. Whip to report?
I report that the bill has been unamended.
Thank you. The whip has reported that the committee has gone through the bill and directed me to report the same without amendment. Third reading?
Now.
The question is that the bill be now read the third time. Minister Mark Spencer.
You, Madam Deputy Speaker, and it's a pleasure. I beg to move that the bill now be read a third time. It's been a privilege to shepherd this bill through the House, delivering on our manifesto commitment to end live animal exports. I'll give way to the honourable lady.
I thank the minister for giving way very quickly. So, obviously, we're happy to see the legislation. I'm disappointed that there weren't amendments made. But however, the government has already thrown out and got rid of the kept animals bill and stated that it expected legislation to cover further areas of animal welfare through private members' bills, et cetera, et cetera. We've only seen one private member bill actually relating to animal welfare. So, can the minister let us know if he expects further legislation around animal welfare, such as, for instance, puppy smuggling, to come to the House and if so, when?
I'm grateful for the honourable lady and for that question because I think there's been a number of comments from the other side that the government's done very little for animal welfare. And I think it's worth recognising, actually, that we recognise animal sentience in law and launched the committee which will advise government on how policy decisions should be made. We ramped up enforcement with increased maximum sentences for animal cruelty for from six months to five years of imprisonment. We launched the consultation on financial penalty notices, power up to £5,000 worth in fines, in addition to existing penalties under the Animal Welfare Act 2006. Introduced new protections for the service animals under Finns law. We raised farm animal welfare. We've also launched the animal health and welfare pathways with new annual vet visits and grants for farmers. We've implemented a revised welfare slaughter regime and introduced CCTV in our slaughterhouses. Ban traditional battery cages for laying hens. Permitted beet trimming via only infrared technology. Raised standards for meat chickens. Significantly enhanced companion animal welfare. Revamped the local authority licensing regime. Commercial pet services, including selling of dogs, breeding and boarding of animal displays. Ban the third party puppy and kitten sales with Lucy's Law. Made microchipping compulsory for cats and dogs. Introduced offences on horse fly grazing and abandonment. Introduced new community order powers to address dog issues. Provided valuable new protections for wild animals. Banned wild animals in travelling circuses. Passed the Ivory Act, including one of the toughest bans. I've got a long way to go yet on elephants on ivory sails. Gave the police additional powers to tackle hair coursing. Ban glue traps. Supported private members' bills which passed in the last session, including banning of detached shark fins. Launched the consultation to ban the keeping of primates as pets. So apart from those few items, we've done very little. I give way to my honourable friend.
Thank you, Madam Deans. Can I thank the minister for going through that very detailed, lengthy list? I can only apologise for having interrupted him. It clearly shows that this government has animal welfare at the heart of its policies. So, on behalf of the people of South Leicestershire and on behalf of animal welfare organisations like the excellent RSPCA, can I thank the government for having done the right thing?
Well, I'm very grateful to my honourable friend for that intervention and I'm also grateful to all of my colleagues that have supported this legislation as it went through the House. I give way to my honourable friend on the back way. I'll come back to it. I'll come, I'll come back to it.
Very grateful to the...
With respect.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think it was... Sit down!
Sorry, I apologise.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Speaker. Given the hugely impressive list which the Minister has just read out, putting the United Kingdom at the vanguard of annual welfare matters, and this is yet another piece of trailblazing legislation to add to that, is there any indication that our former EU partners are looking to follow suit and up their game on animal welfare when it comes to live transport of animals?
So, of course, he'll be aware that I'm not responsible for the legislation within the EU, but certainly in conversations with friends within the EU, I'm told that they are looking at live animal transport within the EU at this moment in time, but of course, that is a matter for them. I'll, I'll go to my honourable friend there and then I'll come to the honourable friend.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the Minister and the government for fantastic legislation and great track record, something we can be truly proud of, and isn't it right that this piece of legislation today was not possible when we were EU members? And we put right that wrong, and I would urge them to catch up.
Well, but as ever, my honourable friend is absolutely right. Now, I've held the Honourable Lady back too long, so I'm conscious we do need to move on.
I will be very quick and thank the Minister for giving way. With respect to the Minister, I didn't ask him what the government had done, I asked him what measures that were in the Kept Animals Bill that was thrown out by the government might we expect to see coming forward in the future? I know what the government's done, I pay attention, I'm asking what the government intends to do.
Well, of course, I hope she will recognise tonight is a big step forward, there's a huge chunk of the Kept Animals Bill, there's also a private members' bill coming forward, I think, early in March, which we will, of course, deliver upon. And of course, I could just contrast that with what happened under Labour. I could take her back to July twenty, two thousand and nine, where, following a question from a Labour member about what they were intending to do on the export of live animals, the answer to the question was that the export of live animals is a lawful trade and to restrict it would be contrary to free trade rules. Such a, such a trade must adhere to the standards set out in the Health and Welfare Rules. So the Labour Government in two thousand and nine had the opportunity to do this and chose not to do it. But let me turn to third reading, because I know I don't want to detain the House too long, but I'm hugely grateful to my honourable members across the House who have contributed to the scrutiny of this bill and who have been present during its passage to ensure that this trade is consigned to history. I know that the topic of live exports is close to the hearts of very many members within this House, and it's been, it's been cheering and wonderful to hear so many of parliamentarians to speak in support of the bill. I give way to my colleague, Lord.
While he's receiving accolades from the members behind him for the work he has done on animal welfare, could I express on behalf of people in Northern Ireland the disappointment that once again a conservative and unionist government has not applied the same law to the major, the place where most live animal exports come from? Has not extended that, the animal welfare protections because this government is more interested in cozing up to the EU than really in dealing with the issues which affect people right across the United Kingdom?
Well, I'm grateful for his intervention. I'm not, I'm not going to argue with the honourable gentleman. There's, there's much more that we agree on than we disagree on, and I don't, I'm not going to sour this moment by getting drawn into that. He knows my sympathy to, that I have for, for his political desires and his desire to hold the United Kingdom together. It is something which I am enormously sympathetic to as well, and he has my commitment to work with him going forward and to his colleagues to ensure the United Kingdom remains intact. And I'll give way one more time and then I'll have to move on.
Madam Deputy Speaker, in that very long and impressive list of achievements read out by the Minister, I think you failed to mention a complete ban on animal testing, a decision taken by the Home Secretary last year. Does he agree that this is yet another example of the Brexit dividend?
It was not an extensive list, there are many examples, Madam Deputy Speaker, of where this government has acted, and we will continue to do so as we move forward. Can I just put on record my thanks to animal welfare groups, to particularly to Compassion in World Farming, and I will give way to my honourable friend because he's been involved in the legislation all the way through.
I thank the Minister for giving way, I've been so disappointed after sitting here for three hours or whatever it was, not to be able to bring up the subject of fragro yet again, because Madam Chair, now Madam Speaker, Deputy Speaker, gave me the look, which was understandable. There was a long list of what we've done. What we can do going forward is ban the import of fragro. Fragro is banned in production in this country because it's cruel. Why are we still importing it and why aren't we banning it?
Well, I'm grateful to my honourable friend for that intervention. Of course, this is a bill which is dealing with the export of live animals, not the import of, of products, so I'm sure there'll be many opportunities for colleagues to continue to raise issues of animal welfare, and of course, they will have a sympathetic ear from the, from the government. Can I just put on record my sincere thanks to those animal welfare groups, which I was starting to mention, particularly Compassion in World Farming, but also from the, from the NFU and other stakeholders that have helped with consultation responses and for their support as the bill has, has made progress. But I also want to put on record my thanks to my excellent civil service colleagues who've been very supportive throughout the drafting of this bill and the work which they've done to help get it to this point. The bill will reinforce our position as a world leader on animal welfare, and that's something of which we can all be very proud. I look forward to following the bill's progress through the other place, and I commend the bill to the House.
The question is that the bill be now read the third time. Ruth Jones.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker, and I don't wish to detain the House any longer than is strictly necessary, but this is an important bill and I welcome its relatively speedy journey through this House. It beggars belief that it has taken so long to bring this unnecessarily cruel trade to an end, and that's why Labour supports the bill, even if it is long overdue. Indeed, we have long called for the ban on live exports for slaughter and fattening from or through Great Britain, and it has been said already that every year millions of farmed animals are at risk of facing long-distance journeys, exporting them for fattening and slaughter, causing unnecessary suffering to animals. These journeys can cause animals to become mentally exhausted, physically injured, hungry, dehydrated and stressed, and that is why these benches sought to strengthen the bill to make it fully fit the purpose. Now, Madam Deputy Speaker, the Labour Party has a proud track record on delivering progress on animal welfare in government, and whilst the Minister's been very proud to shout what the government has done over the course of fourteen long years, he didn't really answer the question my honourable friend for Lu, for West Lancashire asked about future plans on puppy smuggling, on ear cropping and hunting trophy imports. So I'm looking forward to hearing some imminent news on those important areas as well, because Labour Party, when we were in government, we made progress on animal welfare from ending the testing of cosmetic products on animals in nineteen ninety-eight, to stopping the cruelty of fur farming in two thousand. We introduced the Hunting Act in two thousand and four, and we brought in the Landmark Animal Welfare Act in two thousand and six. We continue that fine tradition with support for this bill tonight. And I would like to acknowledge the team who worked with me and who supported me as this bill travelled through this House. I'd like to thank my colleagues in the Shadow Defra team, the Members for Hull, Weston Hessel, Cambridge, Chesterfield and the Shadow Secretary of State, my friend from Croydon North, and all the people who support them from day in and day out, especially Adam Jogi in my office. I'd also like to thank the organisations who have helped, as the Minister's already mentioned, Compassion in World Farming and the NFU, but I would also like to acknowledge the officials in the department and in the Minister's private office for their work too, and I'm grateful for the Minister, and it's not often I say this, for the time that he has given to, to, to talk to us on this. And of course, the wonderful team in the Public Bill Office, who are just brilliant. And a final thanks, as this bill moves on to the other place, to the campaigners, stakeholders and true believers who want realistic, pragmatic and strong animal welfare rules and regulations here in Great Britain. I wish this bill well and look forward to proper, timely and real action, real action animal welfare in the months and years ahead. Thank you.
Teres Coffey.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker, it's a pleasure to speak in the third reading. And the reason I do this is because it was important that when the Kept Animals Bill was set aside, a commitment was made to bring the legislation forward, and this is a key element of that. It's a key element of our manifesto commitment that we will fulfil, and indeed, frankly, the other House should stop bleating about this element, we will get the other aspects done. I myself am taking a private members' bill through, which is one of the elements of the Kept Animals Bill. Now, this is something where we should not be trying to play tit for tat, this is about what really matters, the welfare of animals, and this is a really important stage in that regard. My right honourable friend has already read out a litany of what we have achieved in our time in office, and as I say, the one person who cannot speak in this debate is my honourable friend, the Member for West Dorset, who himself took through the Animal Welfare Sentencing Act two thousand and twenty-one with the support of the government, and as the Chief Executive of the RSPCA said, it was a monumental moment for animal welfare legislation, empowering the courts to hand out sentences that more accurately reflect the seriousness of these crimes. So I'd strongly support this bill. What I will say to the House and indeed to the other House, this is a simple, straightforward bill. This can get through the other House by March, by the end of March, could be done by Easter, without question. This is not the moment to start adding left, right and centre, all of those sorts of elements. Let's keep it simple, let's keep our commitments in the manifesto, I hope the House of Lords respects the will of this House, and I look forward to it not coming back, but indeed becoming an act before the end of the spring.
SNP spokesman, Stephen Bonner.
Good work, Madam Deputy Speaker, it's a real pleasure to be speaking in the third reading of this bill. Before I begin my remarks, I'd also like to give thanks to all members and parties across the House for the collegiate manner in which we have worked cross-party to finally drag the government to this point, as well as all stakeholders, animal rights campaigners and the National Farmers Union of Scotland. Together, we are resolute in our pursuit to enhance the welfare standards of animals, and we will persist in our legislative efforts to achieve our shared goals. I'd like to also single out my honourable friends, who sit on the Ephra Committee, so ably chaired by the Member for Scabran Wickby, as well as my honourable friends for North Ayrshire and Aran, Aberdeen North, and also my honourable friend for the Member for Angus, for their previous excellent work on the committee and across all matters of animal welfare. I also wish to pay tribute to Josh Upton-Simons and Aaron Lucas for their support and the fantastic amount of work they have put in, in this area also. Coming to an end as it is, this parliamentary term, after repeated failures by the government to bring the Kept Animals Bill forward, we may finally see a live export ban in the UK that follows the lead and the wishes of the Scottish government, who have remained steadfast in their determination to see this bill come to fruition. I say finally, Madam Deputy Speaker, because it is two years and four DEFRA ministers since we first heard of the Kept Animals Bill. Finally, a promised livestock ban has come, but in Scotland, we remain cautious. Well, why are we cautious? Because it must be delivered in a way that protects Scotland's traditional crofters and island communities and does not undermine our agricultural sector. We in the SNP have noted with great concern the dalliance of the UK government to prioritise animal rights and welfare abuse mitigations by the shelving of the Kept Animals Bill. Concerned because we are wholly committed to protecting the welfare of animals and will continue to bring forward legislation to improve the welfare of animals in Scotland and indeed across the United Kingdom. But, yes, of course we are.
He's making, in excellent speaking, some excellent points about how long it has taken even to get to this point. Does he show the concern that many of my constituents do, that this government doesn't appear to be treating animal welfare with any great priority, given the, the way in which they've treated the Kept Animals Bill?
I thank the honourable member for her intervention, and she is absolutely right. The reality is that this place does not match the ambition that we have in Scotland or indeed in Holyrood, to make sure that we are maintaining the highest possible standards of animal welfare and of course protecting our communities and the fantastic produce, our exquisite produce that our farmers make. We are also concerned, Madam Deputy Speaker, because the Scottish government well has experience in managing stringent animal welfare standards to the highest levels, we are matching the EU ambitions, the UK is lagging behind, there is no question about that. Current livestock can move for twenty-eight hours with a one-hour mid-journey break, followed by a twenty-four-hour rest period before the next movement. During these journeys, it is unquestionable that these animals will be distressed, their normal and instinctive behaviour restricted, and unavoidable vehicle motion may cause stress and there is other concerns as well, such as exhaustion, dehydration and overcrowding. The Scottish government's preference is to have consistent animal transport legislations across Great Britain, which necessi, which makes necessary UK-level regulation, and so the Scottish minister tabled the consent motion in the Scottish Parliament. But again, it is important to emphasise that any changes must recognise Scotland's established patterns of livestock movements from islands and remote areas of Scotland onto the mainland and must not disadvantage Scottish farmers, crofters by banning movement between the islands and the mainland. The ban must also not include animals exported for breeding, which are a vital part of Scotland's agricultural sector, especially in trading with the Republic of Ireland, we've heard about, about that today. This is, of course, an area of largely devolved policy, the SNP are determined to maintain the highest of standards of animal welfare, as well as protecting our farmers and ensuring our exquisite produce retains its world-beating status. The Scottish government will continue to work with the UK government and other devolved administrations to ensure the smooth implementation. Our officials remain vigilant, closely monitoring and engaging with DEFRA on matters that may extend into Scotland or potentially impact the country, with a particular focus on livestock exports. A vital facet, Madam Deputy Speaker, of our agricultural landscape. Thank you.
Sammy Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker, and I simply want to use this opportunity at third reading to emphasise a point I made at second reading, the point which we made at committee stage, and again now as we come to the conclusion of the debate on this bill, that I find as a member of the United Kingdom, a citizen of the United Kingdom, representing people who believe that being members of the United Kingdom mean that the laws which apply should apply to them as well as everybody else, that I find it obnoxious that a bill which the government says is to, to help animal welfare should not apply to the part of the United Kingdom to which I belong. It's an example of the danger, the long-term danger which I and my party have highlighted, that as a result of the Windsor Framework and the Northern Ireland Protocol, there will be regulatory divergence and legal divergence and eventually constitutional divergence between Northern Ireland and the rest of the United Kingdom. And it doesn't matter how the government tries to dress it up, and I know the Minister is sincere, and I had a long discussion with him last week, I know that he wants to see the same standards apply in Northern Ireland, I know that he has a love for Northern Ireland, but the truth of the matter is that no matter what he wants and no matter how he views things, he cannot live up to the promise that he wants the same standards, he wants to work to ensure that the same standards apply to Northern Ireland as apply in other parts of the United Kingdom. Because the first duty of this government, it seems, is to ensure that it does not annoy its masters in Brussels, masters to which it, masters to which it has subjected itself as a result of the Northern Ireland Protocol.
I thank the honourable member for giving way, and I thank him for his contribution on the part of the Democratic Unionist Party in relation to this very important issue. Would you agree with me that this notion that this is trailblazing, the, the backslapping really has sent out a very dire message to the people of Northern Ireland who want to see us improve and enhance our welfare standards even further than what we already achieved in Northern Ireland? And the message from this government tonight is very much that Northern Ireland doesn't matter in this regard?
Well, I think that the member's absolutely right, that Northern Ireland is regarded as a place apart, as a place which can, which has to be treated differently. And the irony, as I pointed out earlier in this debate, is that this, this bill, because there's very, there haven't been any live exports from GB, outside GB since two thousand and twenty. This bill ironically leaves out the one part of the United Kingdom where animal welfare concerns should be highest, because we're the area which exports all the animals out of the United Kingdom at present, exports them to the south of France, the south of Spain and all over the place with days of journeys for the, for the animals. And so, before the government congratulates itself, it has not addressed the problem, the main problem of animal exports, because animal exports primarily occur from the part of the United Kingdom which I belong to, and this bill, because of EU dictat, so much for taking back control, cannot apply to Northern Ireland. And I hope that the, the, the government will address this problem, and I've got to say to the government that unless the issue of the application of EU law to Northern Ireland is addressed... law to Northern Ireland is addressed, then we are going to see more examples of this divergence. In fact, tomorrow, when we look at the Rwanda Bill, we're going to find that the very legislation which is supposed to apply to immigration will not be able to apply to Northern Ireland, leaving Northern Ireland a back door. There's a big problem that needs to be addressed, it can't be ignored. You can't, the people of Northern Ireland, those who are unionists, cannot be ignored. But more important than this, if government has set objectives, as I have done in this particular bill for animal welfare or other objectives that the government might set, they can be thwarted by the constitutional arrangements which have been put in place between this government and the European Union and Northern Ireland.
Thank you. I'm searching for another speaker. I have no takers. The question is that the bill be now read the third time. As may as that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. The ayes have it, I think the ayes have it. Order. Must be terrible to permanently have a quiet voice. We come now to motion number three on immigration and asylum. Minister, to move?
I beg to move.
The question is, as on the order paper, as may as that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. Division, clear the lobby.
The ayes to the right, 291, the ayes to the left, 49.
How's it pressing?
Thank you. The ayes to the right, 291, the ayes to the left, 49. So the ayes have it, the ayes have it. Unlock. And we proceed to motion number four on immigration. Minister, to move?
I beg to move.
The question is, as on the order paper, as may as that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. Division, clear the lobby. Order. The question is, as on the order paper, as may as that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. Tell us for the ayes, Robert Largan and Scott Mann. Tell us for the ayes, Peter Grant and Gavin Newland. Order, order.
The ayes to the right, two hundred and ninety. The noes to the left, fifty-three.
The ayes to the right were two hundred and ninety, the noes to the left were fifty-three, so the ayes have it. Unlock.
Unlock!